All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 6, 2025 meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us this evening.
Tom Tarenti.
Paul Kaplan.
Sunny Bowser, Recording Secretary.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demergen, zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started with our agenda, I just wanted to mention one thing. We present the flowers, Jen. Commissioner Smith is with us for the last time this evening. She is resigning her seat on the Plan and Zoning Commission, and she's gonna fill the unexpired term for Judy Wright Williams, who sadly passed away not long ago, on the Board of Selectmen. So, of course, it's, you know, good news, bad news. You know, bad news that we're gonna be missing you. But the good news is that you'll be serving the town of Orange still.
Yes.
In a capacity as a selectman. So how many years?
That's what I was about to get to.
How many years?
I think at least thirty-two.
Oh, my goodness.
Because I missed a meeting to give birth to my daughter, who's thirty. And we'd already had her. I mean, I was already here a few years before that, so. And I figured today, like, two meetings a month for twelve months for thirty-two years. It's about seven.
Look at you with the math.
Sixty-eight meetings, potentially.
You know what's even more amazing about that? You're only thirty-nine years old.
Yeah. I just did the math. It's unbelievable.
So, I mean, you were, what, seven?
You're like the Greta Van Thornberg of planning.
Zoning, exactly. Well, it's truly been an honor to serve with this commission and all the prior ones. And to serve our town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for everything.
Constantly learning, learning from each other, learning from projects, and, you know, yet preserving our town and the character. And so, I'll just, gonna be at another board, but help. And if there's something that I have an opinion on, you'll be hearing from me.
She's not gonna know us in about two seconds.
But thank you guys for.
You've been a great commissioner, and, you know, thank you. And thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication.
And there go our ratings.
It's the only reason I would tune in.
You can put the flowers down now.
No, okay, let's get to work. We got work to do.
So I can see Kevin making faces at me. But congratulations, Judy.
Thank you, Ozzy.
All right, first item on the agenda, then, is a review of the minutes from the April 1, 2025 meeting. And then after that, the minutes from the April 2, 2025 special meeting. Kevin, did you have time to review those minutes?
Hey, boy, such a group.
All right, I had one comment.
Who is that?
On page three.
Page three.
And the second full paragraph, you know, the bold, the bolded print, middle of the paragraph, it says, "approved with modifications." Shouldn't we indicate what those modifications were?
If you'd like to get that specific, we can. I don't think we've done that in the future. I know we've used "approved with modifications" as language in our minutes before.
In the past.
Or, I'm sorry, in the past, yeah, not in the future, sorry. Apologies, in the past.
I just thought that it should reflect what we actually decided there, in case anybody refers to it someday.
Maybe what we could do is, as an attachment to these minutes, I will include a copy of the Certificate of Approval that has all those.
That's fine. That's what I was thinking. I mean, the only thing I can remember by way of modifications was we wanted to show the location of parking spaces to demonstrate compliance with parking rights.
They had to modify the fish on the lighting to shield it from view.
Those two definitely, and there may have been another. I don't remember.
There were. There were one or two others that we included in their approval.
All right, I think that should get in there, in case anybody has to refer to these minutes someday in the future, which is what we're doing for it.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Other than that, I had nothing.
Just two minor things, Jenny.
Yeah.
Last paragraph of page two, second to last line. I think the word "I" should go after my name.
Probably, that's probably how I should spell it, yes.
And the same thing on second paragraph of page three.
Okay. I guess I just don't want to give you the "I," Tom.
I know, it's a little myth, but.
Sorry. Sorry.
No problem. The last, I'll be first.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Nope.
All right, let's... Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved with, as amended, right?
Okay.
And that's both sets of minutes?
Well, we didn't get to the set.
Okay, just for the first.
That's just April 1st.
You know, actually, we could probably do them together. Let's do that. The second set of minutes, I had no comment on. Anybody else?
Nothing.
This is the April 2 special meeting minutes. Okay, then Paul, proceed.
Move to accept them.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right. Next item on the agenda is old business.
Just one question. Subsequent to the approval of that coffee shop, I distributed some language for consideration on modifying
Yes.
the regulations, so we don't have to deal with this every, you know, as a routine signage issue. Any thoughts?
You circulated that by email to everybody, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and I know I looked at it, I read it, and I don't have it with me.
Maybe for next meeting, we can kind of set today, we're gonna discuss that, and I will recirculate that email.
Okay. Let's make that an actual.
Yeah, I'll throw it on the agenda item.
Put it on the agenda, you know, under old business, and specifically reference it.
Yeah, because there's some, we have multiple steps if we're gonna add some text to the regs.
Sounds good to me.
Anything else?
Nope.
What are we doing on the proposed regulation? The amendments for the smoke shop, vape shop? I mean, what Vinnie drafted looked okay to me. I probably would want to spend a little more time on it.
Sure. We, Vinnie just gave it to us last week, so I just got the notices out. So we have thirty days before we're gonna be able to open a public hearing anyways. So I will make sure I distribute that language tomorrow. And then the earliest we can open the public hearing, I think would be our first meeting in June, which looks like it's the third. So if we want, if we want a time to discuss the language before we go to public hearing, we can do that, or if we wanna.
Yeah, but not, no, no. Town attorney just gave us the amendment.
Oh, okay.
You know, the modification.
Really, the only extensive language is the definition.
We talked about it conceptually. Now we have, you know, something to actually.
Have Vinnie weighed in on.
Review and vote on, you know. So maybe we, there's no hurry, because the moratorium is in effect for several months still. So I don't see any problem, as long as everybody agrees that, you know, if we put it on our agenda to discuss that language.
Maybe at our next meeting?
At our next meeting. Or the meeting in June, and then send it to public hearing.
Next meeting can be very busy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does that sound right to everybody?
So at our second meeting in May, we'll plan on looking at what Vinnie gave us, and then.
Put Kevin's language as "old business," item one, and this will be "old business," item two.
Gotcha.
We'll discuss the amendments to the regulations, and then we'll probably decide that that's what we want. Because, I mean, it looked good to me. It looked like what we had talked about. All right?
Sounds like a plan.
All right, how about new business? We have referenced there the bond release request for Beecher Walk condominiums, submitted by Oak Tree Development LLC.
Any issues with that?
No, if we remember, we released the majority of this bond, I'd say, two or three years ago now. We held on to the last little bit just for some punch list items.
Beecher Walk is the old dump area?
Near the transfer station.
Transfer station, sorry.
Yeah, near the transfer station.
I'm never politically correct. It's a horrible.
But yes, and everything is all set on our end. I've inspected, the town engineer is inspected. We also got an endorsement letter from the HOA there, you know, signifying that they are comfortable with the bond release as well. So I don't think we should have any issues there.
Yeah, I mean, probably have no basis for not approving the.
All right, a move that we approved the release of the, or the bond request submitted by Beecher Walk condominiums, submitted by, I'm sorry, Oak Tree Development LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll be in touch. Yep.
All right, next, anything else on the new business? Okay, all right, then report of the zoning enforcement officer.
We have our plan for smoke shops, the car wash at Seventy, oh, sorry. The car wash at Seventy-Nine Boston Post Road. I did a inspection there this week. They are getting pretty close to getting ready to open. I know they have a couple outstanding items with fire in building that they're taking care of this week.
Which one is this?
This is, it's the old Sponge Brothers, now Russell Speeders.
Right.
Towards the West Haven side of the post road. Yeah, they knocked down the service center.
Vacuum containers.
And vacuum. Back, I knew it sounded familiar, yes, yes, yes.
Yes, so they are.
Give me a chance to rub it in again?
They're almost done over there.
I love being right, right?
But other than that, I don't have too much for the commission tonight.
All right. All right, then I guess we'll get to the highlight of the evening. Our partners BFJ Planning are here this evening. You wanna, yeah, sit at the table with us?
You gotta let us frame your sign.
I thought I was gonna have to take it with me to save money.
Is it the same one as the selecting?
I don't know what they use. I was thinking.
Leave the holder.
I'm sorry to hear you're leaving, but I'm also happy to hear that you're gonna be a first selectwoman, so you get to.
On the board.
You get to vote, probably.
What is this?
When the plans refer to the.
Yes, I'll get to see.
You'll get to vote.
I'll get to see our finished work, be part of it and vote on it, exactly.
Here's our chapter nine.
Chapter nine.
I brought a lot of materials with you tonight.
The, well, it's really, Ozzy, it's, well, everybody's got an agenda also. Yeah, I might just cover the agenda a little bit, and just as intro, and then.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep.
It's Frank Fish from BFJ Planning, and Suzanne?
Yeah, Suzanne Goldberg from BFJ Planning.
And I think I'll go over the status of work and the timeline in just a minute. We've also given you a summary of the public workshop. And then we've got a, one of the chapters has, we think, a significant change, so we've got that for you to see, which is a one-pager. And then want to review, the main thing tonight is to make sure that the chapter nine, which is the end of the plan, the future land use plan, and the implementation matrix is okay. And then to discuss sort of next steps on this.
Sounds good.
So, just on the other page of the, back of the agenda is, you know, just the timeline that we've been working to, and I think we're where we want to be in the timeline. And that is that we've had the second workshop, we've completed all of the chapters. The new one before you is, you know, we wanted to wait till after the workshop so that the public had, you know, final comments, and then develop the final chapter. So that's what's before you this evening. And we felt, well, on the basis of that and your discussion tonight, we'd make any final changes, send them to Jack, and it would then allow you to do what Connecticut state law requires, that sixty-five day review. So it would go to the selectman. So I'm glad, selectmen that's.
I'll do a summary for them.
Very familiar. Very familiar with.
I'd be very surprised if you voted against it.
And also, it has to go to the Regional Planning Agency in North Haven, and then it has to go to OPM, the Office of Planning and Management, in Hartford. And their reviews, we find, vary, but they have sixty-five days. They may have no comments. Occasionally, they have some comments.
And we do refer it to the Board of Selectmen before the regional.
You can do it at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, you can do it at the same time.
Gotcha.
I need to check the law. I think the selectmen may have a shorter.
I think it's thirty, I believe it's thirty-five days.
The selectmen have.
That's why I asked, I think that is right.
Thirty-five days.
Yeah.
And so they'll have the, they'll have the same amount of time, in essence.
Yeah, they need once a month, just so you guys know that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
And so they'll have time. And then what we had talked about, I think, just briefly at the workshop, Ozzy, I think I had talked to you about. So that sixty-five days, if Jack gets this out, say, you know, before Memorial Day, or say, this month, later this month, then they've got all summer, the selectmen. And because Jack said the Regional Planning Agency, you might be concerned, would have enough time.
They have. They have two other POCDs coming to them for review this summer as well, so they are trying to get ahead of our schedules here.
So they'll have plenty of time. And then we were thinking of the public hearing.
Yeah.
My notes were the public hearing on September sixteenth. I think you had mentioned, Ozzy, to me at the workshop. By the way, we're not wedded to the sixteenth, but.
Yeah, I don't.
I think.
I don't know, I can't remember what the.
Let me see what.
What the thinking was, yeah.
Yeah, what, you know, what was special about it?
Is that a regular meeting date for us?
By the way, it may have been, I just marked.
September sixteenth is a Tuesday, so.
Yeah, that may, maybe that's our second scheduled meeting of the month.
That's right, it was your second meeting in September. It doesn't have to be, it could be your first meeting. Oh, I know what it was. I thought that you want time, when people get back from the summer, to advertise it, to, you know, let people know about it. And the sixteenth sounded to me like, when's your first meeting in September?
The second.
Oh, yeah, it's coming back to a public hearing, you know, over the summer.
Yeah, Labor Day, right.
Yeah, and that's why I think we had, we had thought about.
That was a target date.
Yeah, target date of the sixteenth.
All right.
And.
Well, we do have, you know, we have two meetings in June, one meeting in July, and two in August, so.
You have two meetings in August?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
One in July, one in December.
Right.
Just a quick question on, in chapter nine, I'm sure you're gonna get to it, but in figure three, in the commercial uses you've identified, do those in, are office buildings, are office uses in commercial?
They're in commercial.
They're in commercial.
This is a very general, yeah, for the general land use.
For general land use. Do you think that it would be of any use to people who were reading this in the future if they understood the difference between industrial, institutional, and commercial? Meaning the distinctions?
Yeah, if you go to the page four.
That's what I'm looking at now.
Yeah, there's a description of the uses. So if you see under "commercial," we list things such as retail, business and professional offices, restaurants, hotels, places of worship, and then industrial, things like manufacturing warehouses, yeah.
All right, so that'll help with the key.
Yeah.
The key.
Thank you.
Yep, yeah.
And this isn't the final format of the plan. I think we'll get into this later, but hopefully it'll be a little bit clearer once we have a final layout and everything.
So, by the way, just before we, I just wanted to confirm, is September sixteenth? I was gonna reserve that date, you know, make sure that.
Yeah, I mean.
Is that good for everybody?
Yeah, are we planning, would we like to do it at our workshop room? I mean, even if we get the number that we had over there for the workshops, I think we can accommodate that in this room. So I'm not planning on booking that room for the sixteenth, unless.
Up to you, because the hearing is, as you know, the public hearing is a different format.
Right.
It's you sitting here, really taking any comments. It's not a question.
We've done both, we've done public hearings over there, too. We usually only go there if numbers are gonna be, you know, an issue.
Yeah.
I'm not open for discussion, I mean, I'm not anticipating.
No, I mean, given the two meetings we've held so far at High Plains, I mean, I can't imagine we get many more than that. And it seems like we could accommodate them here.
Yeah, so as of right now, I'm not planning on booking that.
That's okay.
All right. So you need to put a, you know, Jack, you'd need to put an official notice, newspaper record, and.
Oh, yeah, and if it's on our normal meeting date, too.
And then we'll plan on the sixteenth. And if we could maybe just spend a moment on it now, what we usually do at a public hearing is not necessarily give a slide presentation, because it's really people coming to comment, but maybe have, you know, a board or a handout that says, hey, here's the table of contents of the plan. Maybe explain the plan for two or three minutes, and then turn it back to you as the chair, Ozzy.
Yeah, I mean, get any comment, but again, I mean, I think probably not likely to get all that much more.
I don't think so.
Comment, given, you know, what we had at the meetings we held.
Yeah. And then.
I mean, I was left with the impression that that people showed up with a basic feeling that we're, the town, they like the town. It's currently good, and anything we do to try to make it better should be carefully, and, you know, yeah, small baby steps. Don't change major character, protect the character.
Yeah, I mean, nothing significant has happened, or you'll see any major problem with the existing plan of conservation and development, so we weren't gonna be making major changes.
Right.
Right. And I think the only thing to discuss after that is, if you feel after the public hearing you need a meeting or changes, we can come to a meeting and make final changes before adoption. It may be that there are, I've had instances, well, recent one was Newtown, Connecticut, which didn't have any, they had two or three changes, but they were editorial changes, which the planner just sent to us. And he said, you know, these are the editorial changes from the commission, just make those changes, and then.
Yeah, nothing substantive.
Yeah, there was nothing substantive, and then I went just because I wanted to be there for adoption.
Yeah.
And, you know, then they adopted it. So you never know, you know, there's, you know, this could be something at the public hearing that you decide, oh, we do want to make a change, and we come back to a meeting in October then, or. But if not, it could come through Jack to us, we'd make a change, particularly in, you know, type O. Or, there's always something, you know, there's always little editorial things, minor changes. We'd make those, and then send you hard copies. And, by the way, we can get into this later, but we'll change, what you're getting is something that's, the draft copy will be in Word. But what we like to do is, when we know it's ready for adoption, is to turn it into, you know, in-design format, which is a nice crisp format.
How soon do you think we'll be there?
Oh, we'll have the Word document, the draft document, to, I hope, to Jack this month, depending on tonight. But I think if all goes okay, by this month, Jack can send it out to trustee, first select, the selectman. Get my towns confused, the selectman, and then OPM and the Regional Planning Agency. Then they'll comment, they have sixty-five days, so you should get their comments by August. You'll know what they are. And then you can, you can put them in the record to the hearing, if you want. They are discretionary, that is, you, it's up to you whether you accept their comments or not.
Right.
So then you make that decision.
So you'll forward this in an email, you know, a PDF, or?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we'll, yep, go ahead.
All right, we're gonna compile all of the Word, and Word into one PDF. One PDF with all of the chapters, that way you'll have one complete document, and then that way, Jack can send that one document to the various agencies. Because I know right now, we've been sending them sort of piecemeal as we've been going for you to look at, but we'll have one complete document, and then we usually wait to put it into in-design until we get the feedback from the OPM and the Regional Planning Authority. That way, we, any major changes, we don't have to go back into the design file. So that, the final product will be done this summer.
Yeah, but before then, when we send to Jack the electronic copy to send out to the agencies, we'll also send hard copies. I like, you know, I like you as a board to have a hardbound copy.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I would prefer to have a book.
Yep, yeah, we'll do that. Jack will get, we'll send a FedEx, we'll send hard copies. And we think also that the first selectman ought to have their own copy.
Yeah, maybe ten to fifteen copies of, you know, hard copies of the books to distribute.
Right, we'll send you the hard copies, so the commission has them.
Want to keep in the office, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so when, so we think we, you think we'd have that by?
Let's see, we'll be able to, once we.
I mean, it depends on how many comments there are on the chapter tonight.
Yeah, it depends tonight, but I think by the end of May. I would think, end of this month.
Yeah, I think probably, probably sooner, just depending on how many. All the chapters are done.
Not in any hurry, I just want to read it all.
Oh, yeah, you'll have.
As one piece.
One piece, I couldn't agree more. We'll make the hard copies for you all, so you'll have hard copies, I would say, by Memorial Day.
Okay.
So, and then we'll make copies for the, for the selectmen now. Selectmen are five, three?
Five.
Five, okay.
So fifteen copies.
Yeah, we'll make fifteen copies.
Makes sense.
And for the public hearing, you need, I would advise, anyway, have one in the library. And we'll make one for the, we'll make some extra, we'll make a copy for the library, and the town clerk ought to have a copy, you know, just, and the newspaper, you want to say that, that, you know, copies online, but then there's always that comment that.
I don't have a computer.
You don't have a computer, so there should be one in the library and one in the town clerk, and your own office.
Right, yeah, we'll direct people to the zoning office.
Yeah, okay, fine, yep. And then, so we'll send you the copies and everything.
All right.
And so basically, I think the agencies will have no problem there. We're giving them more than sixty-five days.
Good.
Prior to the hearing, so that's, that's good. I just wanted to get through that, and.
All right.
Then item two is just the summary of the workshop. It's really just to, that's, Suzanne, do you want to just highlight what's?
Sorry.
This really came from the tables, you know.
Yeah, and this is on the website, too, so anyone who wasn't at the workshop can take a look. But the first part is mostly an introduction, just summarizing what we discussed in our presentation, the public survey results, we went over a preliminary vision, and some of the recommendations in the presentation. And then at the roundtable discussions, we saw three major themes come up. The first was open space and sustainability. We heard that some participants wanted a greater description of Public Act 490, and so we included that in the open space chapter, we added that in. We added a recommendation about encouraging native species planting, that was also something that came out of the discussion. And there was just a couple comments, I was sitting at a table with the Conservation Commission, they were very detailed in a great way about the map, and so we revised based on their recommendations. On transportation and mobility, people were not too concerned with congestion, and there were some ways to maybe be more specific on traffic calming in the plan that we implemented, giving some examples. And there was support for that connection of a sidewalk path to Orange Center, so we kept that in the plan. And then lastly, land use, zoning, and economic development. We'll go over in a second the, I guess, most significant change, which was just adding in a section on the local shopping center in Orange Center to the economic development section. And there was also a discussion of accessory units. So Jack should, I think Jack sent over to all of you the chapter revisions, and.
This page, Ozzy.
In the chapter revisions, everything that was changed really came out of a discussion with the public at the workshop, as well as a discussion with the volunteer fire department with the public at the workshop, as well as a discussion with the volunteer fire department that we had afterwards, they had some comments, so we incorporated those edits, and then all the chapters that Jack sent you previously have any revisions marked in red for you to take a look at. But do you want to go over this one here?
Yeah, the most important one, I thought, uh, 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 he was at the table you and I were at, and that is the, we put a map in now of, you know, the...
The local shopping center.
The local shopping center.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so we've, we've tried to highlight that just a little bit, that the town kind of supports that owner, and, and future improvements to the center, didn't go beyond that because the, in our meeting, which Jack was at with the first selectmen, he didn't want to do, he didn't want to get into too much detail, he didn't want to do their work for them, to, to make a long conversation very short, but he, but, but I think, given our table discussion, I think he, he would be fine with this, it's not, not anything we're not...
Yeah, I mean, I think it needed to be called out.
Yeah, yeah.
And, did we also talk about the, I mean, does it have a potential municipal use?
Gee, we did not, I have not heard that from anyone. I've not heard it, anyway, I just...
The, that shopping center?
Yeah, I mean, now, given, you know, looking at the map. You know, in, in the proximity to, like, that's Town Hall, Mary O'Tracy School.
Well, and this is just kind of a, a question about not whether with some additional work, this could be an upgraded amenity to the town, putting that just kind of to the side for a sec. Is the POCD a place for us to be suggesting to the selectmen that they consider some sort of tax abatements?
Oh, that, that's, um, that's a holdover from the previous page, and that talks about an existing tax abatement.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
That's specific to this property.
Yeah, that's just part of, yeah. Sorry about that, I thought was confusing.
So now we move forward, and since we're talking...
The, the added language is, is...
Red.
It's just the red, under opportunities for future growth, yeah.
So, since we're talking about an entire zoning district, it's obviously appropriate for it to be called out in here, that that entire district is owned by one owner, and we're kind of calling, I, I don't know, I don't know that I'm kind of...
It feels weird?
It feels weird.
All right, but the, you would have...
No problem if it had multiple, I'm just digging down a little bit, if it had multiple owners, multiple buildings in that one particular zone, you wouldn't feel...
Well, I, I, I mean, you're using the, the bully pulpit of a tenured planning document for the entire town to call out one person to fix their property.
That's, that's the reality.
Yes.
But, but at the same time, it is a building in town, in a shopping, in a, you know, a separate district, that has, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, I don't think there's anything that's untrue in that, in that area, it's a tired building that could use upgrading. You, you feel weird because it's one, one person is what it comes to. I'm not, I'm not judging, I'm just saying that's...
No, I, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the language, you know, is that this is a zone that could use revitalization, you know, and that the, maybe the board should consider some regulatory action to allow some types of, you know, uses there, like if there was a, if there was a mixed-use project.
So softening up, so softening the, the, the language.
Well, yeah, so...
I mean, still one zone and one person.
Well, yeah, so, so, right, but, you know, just saying that the existing land use pattern in that zone could use a, could use, you know, an upgrade, okay, divorcing it from the person and the fact that there's one owner, and that the board could, should consider, you know, language or proposals to, you know, upgrade the existing use pattern, that I think is appropriate.
No, I like you, I like your language better than the language that's proposed, if that's what you mean.
I think you...
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's just, conceptually, do you think...
I understand, I think it's, yeah, the same concept, just, um, yeah, I think, yeah.
And, and so I just asked Jack, is this the only local shopping center district? But there is another one, and that is Firelight, and that has been upgraded, so...
That's not gonna help him.
Yep. Well, now, I, oh, yeah, that's...
Right.
I don't, I don't see any value to the, having this sentence, this local shopping area could use significant improvement.
Mm-hmm.
I would take that out, and I would also take out the next sentence, and I would say something like, you know, the town would be receptive, you know, to upgrading the local, this local shopping center district.
I like his word.
What, what was the word?
Revitalizing.
Yeah, receptive to revitalization of...
And, and that we, you know, would be, you know, open to, uh...
Because the same thing could be said, the same thing could be said about a lot of properties on the Post Road.
One, exactly.
Have fallen into a state of disrepair.
Right.
Are, are, you know, are, are unoccupied.
Yeah, a lot of the vacancies.
So, I mean, you know, it's, uh, it's, the, the difference is, this is, this is unique, in that it's the only commercial use, retail use, in, you know, a sea of residential uses.
Right.
Unlike the Post Road, which is, you know, all...
But signaling a willingness to, to entertain, you know, a mixed-use on that site, if, you know, it helped make the numbers and make it worthwhile to upgrade, you know, might be appropriate. I, I wouldn't mind if there was a two-story building there, I mean, houses can be...
Do we dip our toe in the water?
Two and a half stories.
Have we dipped our toe in the water like this before, where we comment on a particular building in a zone?
Well, didn't we do that with Firelight in the existing plan of conservation development?
What did we say, Matthew?
That we showed that potential to create some sort of street scape nonsense.
Well, yeah, you did, yeah, with Firelight, yeah.
Which we've accomplished to some extent.
Right, not total concept, because that, I think involves closing a road, and...
That's not up, that's not up to us, really, to come up with the concept, just sort of the...
While Jack's looking, I want to try some wording then, if, if, if we deleted, as, as Ozzy just recommended, if we deleted the second sentence, this local shopping area could use significant improvement, I think you said delete that, then if we said the town might in, the, 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 the next sentence I rewrote slightly, too, the town is open to a revitalization of this area, and then pick up to better serve the town residents, and so on.
Yeah, I think that makes, I think it's much better.
Yeah, yeah, positive.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't as much single out, you know, a, a particular property owner.
Yeah, it never mentions one property owner.
And then the, the...
But we are sending a message that we, we'd be receptive to ideas on it.
Right, positive.
And, you know, we want to be very vague on it.
Yeah.
Because I don't want somebody to come in and say, well, you already approved it, you know.
Yeah, the, the old...
So you were the planning commission.
The current POCD identifies an area that includes the Firelight Plaza as future town center, identifies where Orange would be receptive to, to that sort of development, but it encompasses a, a wide range of properties, it's not just the one LSC parcel, so I, I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay. All right, we'll make that, we'll make that change.
That's great.
And so that came out of the public workshop, and then, item four on our agenda, anyway, is the future land use and implementation, and Kevin, you already mentioned the, the future land use map. But what, just so you know, maybe I'll just highlight this chapter a little bit, they, we put in here, your current comprehensive plan has in it a mention of the regional plan, and also a mention of the state plan, so we, we started this chapter with going over the regional plan, and that's your South Central Regional Future Development Intensity map, that's on page two. By the way, we're thinking of maybe zeroing in on this map so that we can be read better and, and just blow it up for the orange portion of the map, which is, you know, down in the bottom left, and making that the center of the map, you know, so that we, we blow that one up a little bit, as we did on the right-hand, page three is the state plan. And by the way, both plans are much more general, because they're, they cover a huge geographic area, you know, the region, it's the whole New Haven region, so that's why they call their map a future development intensity map. So most of orange, as you can see, it's in this light yellow, or even, you know, white, it's mostly white, and so it's low intensity development, and I think that's, I think that's a good category. And then the state plan, you know, does have Route One as sort of the local activity zone, they call it activity levels. So I don't know how they'll comment, because what they'll be commenting on is something that I think is basically consistent.
Yeah.
And, and then we get to the actual, and this is what you were asking about, Kevin, that on page four is the explanation of the categories of the future land use plan, and we really try to make this a little bit generalized, I, we take out, you know, we do have a base map that goes lot by lot, and we try to avoid that in a future land use map, because people tend to say, wow, in the map, here's my lot, and, you know, it, so we usually do future land use maps for all the towns that are generalized, although this is, closely represents a lot of your zoning, and closely represents what we've been, your existing land use, it's kind of a melding of your existing land uses and your zoning code, so I don't think there's any surprises here, the, the, the blue is institutional on the map, the green is what you'd expect, is open space, the yellow, and, by the way, in land use, there's some official land use colors, we're, we're not supposed to, it's not that we have to use them, but the American Planning Association publishes, yellow is always resident, is residential, light yellow is, is sort of low-density residential, brownish is more mixed-density residential, and then anything that's red is usually commercial, and purple is industrial, so this kind of reflects your, kind of reflects your existing zoning categories, but also your existing land use. So that's, that's the future land use map, but it's an important map, because, you know, you want to make sure it does, it does, I, I hope we've accurately reflected, we tried hard with Jack to accurately reflect your existing, your existing zoning, so we're not calling for any rezoning, we're not calling for any, any new zones, and we have obviously avoided any mention of a new railroad station.
Yes, the town is gone.
Yeah, so, no, so that's that, and, and then the thing you might want to, I, I don't know if we want to go through it, all of it, line by line, but we did try hard with, on the next page is six through the end here, implementation matrix, which, which may be worth taking a little bit of a look at, and to make sure that, because, you know, you're more familiar with who would be doing things and carrying them out, and, so maybe Suzanne, you might want to highlight this for the board, you know, it starts on page six there.
Yeah, sure, I think the most important thing to remember about this is, this is a sort of accumulation of all of the recommendations throughout the entire chapter, so I think this is a good place to also maybe see if there's any recommendations that stick out or anything we want to discuss. But the first one is land use and zoning, so the overarching goal is to maintain existing community character, and that would be achieved through preserving the existing single-family neighborhoods, encouraging mixed-use development where appropriate, and maintaining Orange Center's character as a rural hamlet, so we said the responsibility of this would be yes.
Okay, so the words mixed-use development occur multiple times through the matrix, and, so that, but, in one, and in one, it's somewhat explained as office, retail, and residential, okay? If, if that's the consistent definition, all right, then the residential component has a more limited appropriate, is limited, the appropriate areas are much more limited, okay, because of the lack of sewer, for example. So in, in some regards, I don't, you don't want the implementation section to be used as a, a future hammer for somebody who wants to put in a development, you know, off, off those main corridors.
And that's where they would have, you're right, an attorney could come in and...
Well, it's in your POCD, we've gone through this before.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, you, this is something you're supposed to want.
But I think they would have a hard ti, a harder time, Kevin, because staring them in the face is the future land use plan.
Yeah.
Which all that yellow is defined as residential, so...
Low-density residential.
Low-density.
I'm just saying, when we're going through this, because it's, this, there's a lot to go through.
A lot to go through.
I, I would just, you know, we should all be looking at things of, for both their possible, for their positive impacts, obviously, but also for potential negative impacts to the suggestions.
Is your specific language you're referring to, or...
Well, so, I happen to think that if mixed-use means all three of those components, that I would, I would be interested in listening to maybe putting some mixed-use along Route One and some of the big commercial, because there's clearly, as demonstrated by how fast Firelight rented out, and all the other, or Smith Farm Road.
Is this what you're looking at?
They need the future...
I think, I think Kevin's on page six.
Yeah, page six.
Three point one, two.
Yeah, for some reason, that other copy was incorrect.
This copy is not, something lame, this copy, I don't know.
Right, where appropriate, and then it comes back again, three, four, one, and then it's in at five, one, five. So I, I, I'm just thinking that, so while I personally might find that to be an interesting way of dealing with the occupancy pattern that's happening in Route One, not only in Orange, but the rest of the world, and the needs of, or the stated goal of providing more affordable housing or mixed housing choices, I just...
So Kevin, you're concerned about the language, encourage mixed-use development where appropriate?
No, that, that one's kind of okay, but, you know, again, if, if, if that, if that language happens seven times in the implementation, you know, that's a pretty strong message in the future that we think it's appropriate, we should be hearing some of this stuff, right?
And you're saying it's in, I'm, I'm just looking at it.
I, I've only saw in three, seen three, because we just got this, and we started going through, yeah, so, so, I'm a slow learner.
Behind you.
But it, I'm not saying taken out, I'm saying, we as the commissioners, you know, this is going to go through us, and it's going to go up to the selectmen, and eventually everyone's going to have to be comfortable with that the language isn't committing us to, to a direction that we didn't really have a lot of input on. You know, if the input, if the input we basically got is, hey, everything's good now, don't mess it up, well, how much do you want to encourage bringing higher-density things in, unless you're also going to get an affordability component, as an example, right? You know, what, what good does market rate do us? I mean, sure, yeah, people will want to move into it, I mean, it'll, I mean, economically, it's a great, it's great for the, the people who own that property.
Was Firelight a, there was an affordable component?
No.
It was just straightforward rental?
One hundred percent market rate.
Right. And we now have the, the waiver, so we don't have a, a pressure, per se, but that Smith Farms project is terrific.
Right. For the next four years.
For how many?
That moratorium...
That moratorium lasts four years. It's a ten year plan, so we we might not have the moratorium.
No, we may not, no. And 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 I'm saying if, you know, if Smith Farms showed up somewhere else, you know, another one, I mean, they.
They did a nice job there.
Yeah, but we we still, if we didn't like it for some reason, reasons we could articulate, you know, we could point to the language preserve existing single family neighborhoods.
Yeah.
As a goal that runs contrary. And, you know, as I would say the same, you know, the language encourage mixed use development, the language where appropriate. I mean, that would be in our discretion. It would be a special permit application and there's. Yeah, I mean, I know what could happen, but I mean, I don't I don't see anything necessarily offensive about that or dangerous about that language.
Okay.
I think there's enough there to.
Protections are there, you think?
I think so, too, yeah.
I mean, who knows? Is on the on the post specifically or no?
No, no, actually, I think that we probably, you know, we should consider some stuff going on there.
There's always a significant amount of, listen, over the last about ten years, there's a significant amount of vacancy on the post. You know, we keep like Wachemaw, we keep, we put them in here, there's another one over here.
Yeah.
It it hasn't been filled in a in quite some time.
Yeah, and you have infrastructure and public transportation. I mean, that is, yeah, that is a naturally reasonable place to put it if you're going to put it.
I mean, we say in three point four point one, promote mixed use development on Route One.
Yeah.
We don't say where appropriate. I guess that would be better if we did, but.
No. I I think that's a a fine place to put it. It, you know, if it's going to fit in the zone and, you know, I mean, I don't have any problem with that. You want to say where appropriate, that's fine, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not nervous about either, you know, but.
Yeah.
I I didn't mean to sidle on.
No, 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 I think that's an important conversation to have, yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, it it's.
Maybe what we do is go through this, see how many, I mean, we may have been repetitive, as Kevin said. And maybe we go through this, see where else we mention it, and then come back to, we might not need it in three point one two if we mention it. And, you know, like some other sections. Some other sections. So then we could come back to it and see what you think, see what you all think.
Well, if if three point one is maintaining a character, you don't suggest changing the character.
Right.
There, you do it someplace else. But, you know, again, we were just kind of just scooting through and it just.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Stuck out.
In our, this is on another subject, but in our plan of conservation and development, didn't we have some language in there that that suggests suggested we condense or or eliminate some zoning districts that we have? Because they're basically are the same.
We remember that discussion.
We had talked about it.
Like there's industrial, industrial one, two, three, four.
It didn't get any traction. I don't think we we there was no written proposal, I don't think. There was discussion about that, though.
What do you mean, discussion when we did or adopted the plan of conservation and development?
There was a discussion, I can't tell you the timeframe.
I thought it got into the plan of conservation. I don't I don't, I know.
Oh, you think it was?
I know we didn't do anything about it.
You think with with Glenn that we had talked about implementing it as part of the recommendations in the P O C D?
Not implementing, considering it or, I don't remember what the, but I'm pretty sure that there is that language in the plan of conservation and development, the existing plan.
Yeah, I get it.
Under three point four here, we say land use regulations need regular review and updates to ensure consistency. And then that should be three point four point one and three point four point two. But that would be regularly review definitions and regulations. So that might be the place to talk about that.
Yeah, that if that's something we hadn't discussed that as part of the current. But but if that's something that you want to pick up from Glenn's work, I we'd have to review Glenn's work then. I didn't pick that up. But we could.
I'm not dreaming that, am I?
There were discussions, I don't know if it ever made the P O C D.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that. Do you remember?
That was the Glenn discussion?
I I'm almost.
This was when you were drafting the last one?
And no, I know we, I know we never.
I don't know about the timeframe.
Since I've been here, I can't say I remember any.
No, it was definitely, definitely preceded you.
No, we we never and we never adopted any, you know, amendment to the regulations to accomplish that idea.
Right.
But I did, I did think that idea got into the plan of conservation and development, you know.
Community structure, I mean, I'll go through it a little bit.
I know you have a team working on it, but it's it's kind of interesting, you know, sorry, reading ahead that how it seems like more than person, one person's writing it because when we switch over to section five, where I guess you got some input from the Economic Development Corporation.
We did get a little input, yeah.
Okay, so there's a lot of specifically mentioned properties or references. Okay, so I like, I'm not familiar with one ninety-three or one eighty-one Marshall Road. And I'm not sure what calling out specific properties does to the plan of concert, you know, something that's more of a general.
Five point two point one, yeah.
You know what, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Could we go through it maybe systematically?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Do item one first and then get to item five and then we'll get to that in like a minute.
Okay.
So I think we've discussed three. And I think my suggestion would be let's come back to encourage mixed use development where appropriate because we may want to modify that a little bit. Then three point two is continue to preserve and expand open space. And I think there you see some policy and regulations. We we added responsibilities there to the Conservation Commission and the Land Trust over time and said this is a long term goal. And then three point three is the Route One commercial corridor. That's where we say promote you mixed use development on Route One. We're kind of specific there. And then implement stronger site design and landscape controls on Route One, which we had heard. That was something we came out of our, you know, came out of the workshop. And then explore strategies to reduce curb cuts and enhance road safety along Route One, especially with sidewalks. That that also we had discussed, so those, those I think are.
I don't think that that's anything new.
No.
I think that's that's in both our plan of conservation and the regulations.
Yeah, by the way, what is in the matrix here? This is a summary sort of of each chapter. At the end, we had recommendations.
Right.
There should be nothing new here. But now there's language that simply says, oh, here's what the here's what the recommendation was, kind of who should do it?
Right.
And when should it be done? What is it, short term or medium term? That's what this matrix is. I should have, sorry, given you a preface on that. So there should be nothing new in this matrix that we have not previously discussed and was not a recommendation, was not in the plan. But this is a summary meant to say, oh, who's going to be some of the responsibility? Who are the partners to do it? And is this, what's the timeframe, short term, medium term, long term kind of thing? But let me turn this Suzanne, go ahead.
Yeah, you can show that to Suzanne or.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, this was just what Ozzy mentioning before. The consider simplifying the business zoning approach. It's kind of condensing, commercial, industrial, you know, sort of just making it easier. Five easy distinct zones in orange. Maybe after, I could send you the page, let you know.
It's.
Page eighty-two in our current P O C D.
Something, since that hasn't come up in our discussion so far, is that something that you all would want to add as a recommendation under three point four? Maybe where we talk about the review and consistency of land use regulations? We could hold over similar language from the previous plan and add it to that recommendation.
I don't remember what I think it was.
Well, other than we had made it more complicated for ourselves by having ten zoning districts instead of we only really needed five or four.
Well, it's something you could consider, but in the in the short time I've been here, I haven't seen it as an impediment to actually looking at site plans. Or the orderly development that we've had in the last, you know, number of years.
It's not a high priority.
No, it's not.
I mean, everyone seems to kind of get it done.
I mean, if it were a high priority, we would have done it.
There are probably some zones in there that have never been used. I mean.
The senior living district, maybe that might be the only. No, that was, that's where Vero went.
Come into existence because there's a project.
Right, right.
We don't just create a zone.
It's worth a look, I mean, it's worth a look. And we can look at it whether it's in our new plan of conservation and development or not.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, you can, so. Okay.
That's everything on three, land use and zoning. I think under three point four, we talked about regular regular review definitions, regulations. Examine the zoning code and identify potential revisions that would enable homeowners to make minor property upgrades more easily. Examine potential regulatory changes to address common nonconforming uses. This is something that came out of our conversation with Jack about common applications he receives. And then lastly, review performance, noise, and lighting standards, particularly in the core commercial areas.
I mean, three point five point one covers what we just talked about.
Yes, yeah, exactly, yeah.
You said.
Yeah.
Suzanne, I just noticed under three point three and three point four, the.
The numbering? Yeah, yeah, I just got that, too. Yeah, sorry about that, I was shifting things around. But, yeah, in the in the next iteration, we'll make sure everything's consistent, thanks. Do you feel comfortable going on to number four, housing and neighborhoods?
Yep.
Okay, so four point one is to preserve existing residential neighborhoods. And four point one point one, preserve established residential neighborhoods' scale and character. Four point two, Orange should continue to support a diverse housing stock to accommodate its population's evolving housing needs. So four point two point one is to explore opportunities to streamline approvals and permitting processes for housing rehabilitation. I believe that also came out of our conversation with Jack about common applications received. The next one is, this is one that we should discuss. This came out of our last workshop and a discussion that happened, actually, I think at the table you were at Ozzy. Consider expanding the existing regulations for elderly housing conversions, taking into account potential future amendments to Connecticut state law regarding the provision of accessory dwelling units in single family residence districts.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we consider that and reject it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, good job.
So the future will take care of itself with respect to the state directing us as to our obligations. But as it currently stands, when they offered us the option.
You opted out.
They opted out.
So should we delete this one for?
No, I don't think we should delete it. I think we should say. Yeah, I think resist, resist expanding, you know.
Well.
Or just remove it.
To after taking into round, I mean, I I don't, I mean, there's no problem in considering. We do a lot of elderly housing apartments. It's one of our.
But what about the accessory dwelling units?
But I that I'd take out.
Right, yeah.
Because we decided that unless it's attached to, you know, the elderly.
But do we want to go one step further and and send a message that we're resistant to that concept?
Well, if you take it out, I would just.
If you take it out, you're set out.
And that that says enough.
So remove after the comma.
Yeah.
Yeah, just just the words, consider expanding existing regulations for elderly housing.
Conversions, yep.
Right, period, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because we're all elderly now and so we're a special interest group. We're taking care of ourselves.
Our kids would put us on a tent in the front yard. So we don't want to even let that be.
They would, they would. But we'd have a grill as a kitchen.
Tell me you try.
Actually, Judy, I have a I have a daughter and son who've already said to me, you know, you and Bob could live in the accessory unit over the garage. As long as we get the main house.
Right, exactly.
My daughter suggested the same thing.
Protect ourselves.
So nice of them. All right.
Let you out of your cage every once in a while.
Four point two point three, we talked about this previously, the conservation subdivision regulations. Four point three is to continue to promote opportunities for affordable housing. That's four point three point one is support private developers who seek low income housing tax credits to provide some affordable units in market rate developments. Pursue state slash federal funding programs to support the provision of affordable housing stock and require that affordable units be deed restricted in perpetuity where appropriate.
How do I think the words in perpetuity, is that defined in state, I thought it was thirty years?
Yeah, by the way, the regulations used to be HUD HUD had these regulations, yeah. And basically, of course, well, the famous one, the reason a lot of planners are writing in perpetuity now. The famous one in New York City was the old Mitchell Lama program, if you remember it. Well, everybody thought thirty years was forever when they, the New York State Legislature adopted it. And all of a sudden, Mitchell Lama ran out. It was established over thirty-five years ago in New York City. And when it ran out, suddenly, wow, everybody could do what they wanted. And so rents went up and.
Considerably.
Shut that down in New York.
Yeah, and by the way, I don't even, I know I hate to use any New York examples, but, yeah.
Can we just pop back to four point two point three, consider adopting conservation subdivision regulations? Many years ago, we increased minimum lot size. And it was very clear at that point, one of the worst things you could do in trying to preserve sort of open space and contiguous land for the animals and everything is these big cookie cutter lots. But we stayed that way. So I do think going forward, this is a good thing for the commission to pursue because we can get chunks of land.
Chunks of land.
Yeah, well, again, they have to have the conventional layout. And if it's ten houses, it's ten houses, but.
Density.
Density.
Yeah.
And then, so I do think going forward, that's important.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just chewing up land that nobody can use and, you know.
Yeah.
The views and the vistas are gone and it's all private property, that's all.
Right. Okay. Well, is it okay to go on to item five or?
Yeah.
Okay, so item five, here we come to your, Kevin, your item five.
Sure, yes, and I see what you mean about the more detailed nature. We had someone who specializes in economic development look at these so and help develop them. So they are a little bit more detailed. The first one is to strengthen and diversify the business base. So five point one point one is attract a broader mix of retail, restaurant, entertainment, and experiential businesses to revitalize commercial districts, particularly along Boston Post Road and reduce vacancies in large retail spaces. Point two is encourage niche markets such as entertainment venues, boutique retail, and sports complexes to create a distinct commercial identity for Orange. Point three, expand town's focus on advanced manufacturing, biomedical technology, and clean energy industry industries, utilizing available industrial zoned land along Marsh Hill Road and the I ninety-five corridor. Actively make Orange market, actively market Orange to biotech and life sciences firms, capitalizing on New Haven's biotech ecosystem and Yale University's research network to attract medical device manufacturers, research labs, and health tech startups. Promote the adaptive reuse of underutilized retail and industrial properties, converting spaces into mixed use developments that integrate commercial, residential, and office uses. So maybe we can pause there for a second before we move on to five point two. Does anyone have any comments on those?
One through five, you.
Yeah, yep. Okay, we can go ahead to.
I don't have any problem with that.
Five point two, and this is where we might want to discuss the use of specific properties, yeah, parcels. So enhance industrial sector opportunities for and small business growth. This was something we also saw come out of the survey is that there is an emphasis on supporting small businesses on the commercial.
Five point eight, page eight, top, top of page eight. Top of page eight, five point two.
That's a lot of text. Okay, so point one is prioritize, prioritize the reuse of industrial properties.
Period.
Period.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Point two, support industrial uses that align with regional trends, such as renewable energy, manufacturing, advanced materials production, and clean transportation infrastructure. Now that I read this, it might be slightly redundant to the recommendation in the previous one, so we can potentially remove one of those.
Yeah, we could maybe do five point two point two, maybe delete that.
Yeah, it is referenced in five point. Yeah, it's referenced in the, in the previous, the previous recommendation. So, we can come back to that in a minute, but that's potential for deletion there. Point three, offer development resources, offer business development resources, including mentorship programs and marketing assistance for locally owned business, small businesses. Point four, develop an incubator or shared workspace program to support startups in creative, technology-driven, and professional service sectors. Point five, collaborate with regional and state organizations such as Advanced CT to provide small business grants, low-interest loans, and technical assistance. And lastly, continue to support the Chamber of Commerce and the Orange Economic Development Corporation. And we recognize that some of these things, such as business development resources, mentorship programs, are not your responsibility. But we listed the partners as the Development Corporation and the Chamber of Commerce as potentially having a hand in executing some of these.
Okay.
All right, move on.
Okay. Five point three, promote adaptive reuse and redevelopment. Encourage improvements to the existing local shopping center adjacent to the Orange Historic District. So, that comes out of our recommendation from before.
Impairments, have you said encourage re, do you want to be consistent, say encourage revitalization?
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Encourage revitalization of, of the, okay.
Of the existing.
Revitalizations of the existing.
Same comment, I would imagine. On five point three point two.
Well, there, instead of calling out Christmas tree shop Burlington Coat Factory, target, you know, large vacant properties.
For redevelopment.
X Y Z zones, so.
Well, you could just.
Was, Christmas tree shop was some.
LI three.
Zone, you know, that you should never done. But I'm sorry.
Remember, we can get back to, you know.
In the LI three and or, you know, whatever the, you know, for redevelopment.
So, why don't we just take out the.
The names of the companies.
So, if we just said vacant properties for redevelopment and private, commercial, and industrial spaces.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yep, got it.
And then, point four, leverage tax incentive programs and grant funding.
Time out.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Five, three, three?
Oh, sorry about that.
He counts very well.
I appreciate it.
Because it's in there.
Well, three comes after two. No, it's just, um, streamline permitting process, so. So, the, what do you actually mean by a permitting process? Is that, is that the entitlement process, the approval, the approval entitlement? Are you talking about pulling a building firm?
It's really, I think here, the thought was for existing properties where they're coming in for a reuse is to try to streamline that, that, for instance, site plan approval on it.
Okay, and, and what has been identified by whom as that, that's a problem we have?
Yeah, that's, it's another town, it's not us.
Yeah, we had the, the, we had the guys by Chuck E. Cheese come in with something.
Yeah, to, yeah, to do some industrial uses in the commercial zone, yeah.
And that was, did not seem to be a particularly onerous procedure.
We can remove that one if that's not an issue.
No, 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 I'm just asking. It, it didn't come from us, so it, it, has it been identified as something that seems?
Well, not in the public hearing we held the other night. Is that what you mean, in the workshop?
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's.
It would be a developer, I assume, who raised an issue like that, right? That, that language?
Well, i- if they got it from there. I'm, I'm just saying that it, it seems to me.
No, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Right, because we have to do what we have to do by statute.
Yeah.
By our regulations.
Take it out.
Take it out.
We gotta have a public hearing, can't rush it. Gotta have, you know, site plans.
Site plan approval.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it out.
We tend to render our decisions pretty quick.
We are streamlined.
You're streamlined already.
That's good.
That's ever way too easy.
And then, point three, leverage tax incentive programs and grant funding to encourage investment in developing vacant retail, office, and industrial properties.
Fine, with us, we don't do it.
Exactly.
We, we identify that.
Okay, um, five point four, support workforce development. Collaborate with local employers, universities, and trade schools to develop workforce training programs in high-demand industries such as biotech, advancement, manufacturing, and logistics. That's also something that would be the responsibility of perhaps the.
Say, local universities, schools, employers, economic.
Okay, five point five, promote tourism and community events. So, leverage Orange's existing farms and wineries to expand agrotourism, including farm-to-table experiences, vineyard tours, and seasonal events such as harvest festivals and wine tastings.
So. What's the appropriate way to put that? You know, we've got about all the activity we want in our vineyard.
One, we have one.
We have one.
Yeah.
Single winery.
I, I do not mind, uh, you know, helping the, the farms if, if agrotourism is a thing. But I, I, I don't want to signal that we want them to expand their activities in that residential zone.
I see, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
What, what, what section do you want in?
Five, five, one.
Top of page nine.
Top of page nine, yeah, the very top.
You want to just focus on farms?
Okay, just want to make sure we're in order.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why do we, why do we need any of the subsections, sub subsections?
So, there's an overarching goal for each of them, so this one is promote tourism and community events.
So, why can't we leave it at that?
Do we need subsections?
Do we need all of the subsections?
You may not need them all, but I think some of them are valuable. You know, where we identified, for instance, commercial, industrial vacancies on Route One, you know, that type of thing. There might be some.
No, no, we're, we're specifically talking about five.
On this one, I think you could easily take out some of these.
Although in five point five point two, our cultural heritage at the Pez factory could, could be, you know, we could help promote. This is a little postage stamp town.
Yeah, but the, the, these things are, right, go ahead, finish your point.
Well, so, so my point is, yes, we want people coming to our community events. We love having people visit, you know. Tourism, tourism is kind of a, a, a pretty lofty word for what.
For our little town.
For the farmer's carnival. It's a pretty, it's, it's pretty lofty. But, so, I, the, the, the whole, the whole subsection, I think that is absolutely correct. You know, kind of slicing it down into these is a little, it's a, it's a little.
Well, and, and risky from, from the point of view we were talking about before.
Well, in regards to some of that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
And I think I would get rid of five point five point one.
But, yeah, I, I was gonna say that too.
And contemplate the others.
But you know what? I think five point five two, read that over, that, that helps.
Do we have a historic site?
We do. We submit it on the outside.
I missed it?
Oh, sorry.
If you, if you look on the way out, you'll see it.
Okay.
There's, um.
I thought five.
There's a chapter, there's a historic district, obviously.
We have a historic district.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a historic district.
Sorry.
Yeah, I thought five point five two might be good. You know, that, that's a good one, I think.
And outdoor recreational opportunities, hiking trails, all of that's great, but.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know what.
Look, I would delete the word eco-tourism and just say, expand outdoor recreation opportunities.
You don't know what that is.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
I got it, Kevin.
Guided agricultural experiences. Is that like the corn maze?
Or horse fry, horse fries. I've seen the signs for those.
We do, we have a museum.
Apple picking, things like that.
Yeah, we have a museum.
We have the, yeah, the, right here on the Ford Center, yeah.
And by the way, this, this format is extremely useful in being able to understand on the bullet points, the body that we're gonna see later in the full report, so thank you for this work. And we, we're not trying to make light of the effort that it took to create this.
Of course.
In going over individual lines.
This is, uh, this is very informative and will help us with the final product.
Yeah, this is very helpful.
Yeah, help us with the final product, yeah.
They're gonna make a voodoo doll of you.
No, not, we've seen much worse.
You know, between the three, I was gonna say between Kevin and Paul, thank you. Are you both attorneys? Okay, sorry.
All right.
Maintain, five point six.
Yeah, five point six, the last one in the section is maintain a competitive business climate and retain key employers. So, point one, provide targeted business incentives and expansion to support, support to industries in biomedical technology, clean energy, logistics, and high-growth sectors. Strengthen collaboration with state and regional economic development agencies to attract new employers and maintain Orange's business-friendly reputation. Regularly evaluate zoning and regulatory policies to ensure they align with emerging market trends and community needs.
That's good.
It's right there.
Okay.
Great, okay.
Okay, um, transportation and mobility. So, six point one, continue to coordinate with D O, C T D O T on ongoing and potential future roadway improvement studies and projects. Point, six point two, address overall roadway efficiency and safety issues. Point one is to target intersection upgrades to improve traffic, traffic safety at locations that have the highest crash rates. And point two is, in tandem with regional growth and development, continue to study targeted opportunities to promote roadway traffic efficiency and congestion problems. Six point three, address speeding and traffic calming in residential areas. Continue to enforce speed limits through monitoring and citations. Continue to consider traffic calming in residential areas. Six point four, ensure the vitality and traffic efficiency of Route One and adjacent uses. Point one is to continue to support C T D O T plans for Route One improvements, including the planned installation of sidewalks from the Milford border to Lambert Road. Continue to ensure access management strategies during the site plan review process for new developments on Route One. And promote better landscaping in large parking lot areas along Route One through the site plan and the subdivision review process. Six point five, continue to improve pedestrian facilities. Six point five point one, evaluate opportunities to improve pedestrian conditions around key community facilities, including crosswalks and signage. Point two, in addition to the planned sidewalk installation on Route One from the Milford border to Lambert Road, advocate for sidewalk installation on both sides of the corridor extending east to the border with West Haven. Point three, continue to investigate the feasibility of installing pedestrian sidewalks or paths on one side of Orange Center Road connecting Route One to Town Hall. It might be preferable to focus on the east side of the road, as that is where some sidewalk slash pathways currently exist near Town Hall. Six point six, undertake a town-wide bicycle study to assess current conditions and to identify opportunities for potential infrastructure improvements. And six point seven, continue to partner with C T Transit to ensure evolving demographic changes in Orange are met with adequate service.
Those are pretty much also follow right out of the transportation chapter recommendations, yeah.
Okay, um, chapter seven is open space historic and community facilities. So, seven point one, continue open space preservation efforts. Continue to preserve open space as opportunities present themselves. Continue to convert managed open space and perceived open space into dedicated open space owned by the town or land trust. Continue to coordinate open space preservation efforts with the Conservation Committee, Orange Land Trust, and similar organizations. Consider areas of natural diversity when pursuing conservation opportunities. Seven point two, document and promote recreational spaces. Update the Conservation Commission's guide to open spaces. Update the open space inventory in Orange regularly and categorize parcels as appropriate. Document and publicize existing trails and recreational spaces on the town's website. And create a trail plan that documents opportunities to enhance, expand, and connect trails townwide. Seven point three, maintain investment in recreational facilities. Modernize existing recreational infrastructure and implement ADA upgrades where appropriate. Consider the effects of climate change when investing in upgrades to recreational areas. Seven point four, continue agricultural slash farmland preservation efforts. Continue to preserve existing agricultural lands and lands that have potential for agricultural use. Continue with reduced local tax assessment on agricultural lands, P A four ninety farm assessment. Continue to seek ways to support local farms and farmers, including leasing town-owned land to farmers. Seven point five, protect historic resources. Continue to identify and protect historical and architectural resources and support commissions that protect them. Promote educational programs about historic resources and increase awareness of historic resources through appropriate signage, displays, and events. Offer educational resources for private owners of historic properties and available funding opportunities to support building maintenance.
That finishes, that's.
Yeah, uh, there's one, one more is just seven point six, maintain and improve community facilities and services. Maintain effective services related to education, public works, public safety slash health and emergency services. Maintain and improve educational and municipal facilities when needed. Address the needs of both young, youth, and aging populations through programmatic and facility offerings. Continue to maintain and improve transportation services for seniors and residents with disabilities. And this is the one that changed since the last meeting, consider upgrades to facilities for fire services. Yes, yep, this was his, his input.
Oh, I think you're.
You can hear that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, on to the last one, infrastructure. Eight point one, manage water quality and stormwater. Continue to address storm drainage issues, particularly in neighborhoods experiencing flooding following storm events. Eight point two, promote sustainable building practices. Promote green building design for residential, commercial, and municipal buildings. Incorporate land use regulations that minimize the creation of impervious surfaces and promote the use of native plantings. Eight point three, encourage energy-saving practices. Explore the possibility of transitioning municipal facilities to more renewable energy sources, i.e. installing solar panels on roofs. Transition municipal streetlights to energy-saving LEDs. Consider investing Energy Star products or products that meet its criteria in the development of new residential or commercial buildings. And lastly, eight point four, manage sewage treatment and public water supply. Maintain the capacity of Orange's public water and sewer systems. Continue the use of septic systems in most areas of Orange and encourage or incentivize upgrades to the older or underperforming septic systems. And lastly, evaluate necessary infrastructure upgrades and cost estimates for incorporating additional properties into existing intermunicipal sewer agreements.
Well, where did, do we know where that one came from? Because why did?
That came.
Why is it a part of our plan of conservation development to expand sewers in the town?
That was just evaluate necessary infrastructure upgrades. I think there were some studies that were done for potential developments that talked about only necessary infrastructure that would have to be updated in the future. But maybe we could rephrase that to make it clearer that that would.
Into existing intermunicipal sewer agreements. We have two, right? One with Derby.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is just anything that would be necessary for the upgrades with those existing agreements.
It says for incorporating additional properties. So, if it said, evaluate necessary infrastructure upgrades and cost estimates to maintain existing intermunicipal sewer agreements, I would not.
Yeah, that might be a better, yeah. That's a better way to phrase it, yeah.
Yeah, that would.
Okay, to maintain, okay, great.
No dog burn later.
You're putting in maintain instead of incorporating, is that?
Yeah, so evaluate necessary infrastructure upgrades and cost estimates to maintain existing intermunicipal sewer agreements.
All right, so you take out additional properties?
Yep, take that out, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, fine.
Wow.
All right.
Yeah, that's the, that's the actual summary of the plan at the end, so.
No, it's gonna be nice to look, it's gonna be nice to look at it holistically all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What we'll do is now incorporate.
Very good thing.
Yeah, incorporate chapter nine with the rest of the plan and any edits on that, and then we'll give you hard copy documents by the end of this month, maybe sooner. Depends on, I think.
Yep.
I think we can do it. We'll be, we'll give you, we'll send at least fifteen copies to Kevin before Memorial Day.
All right, sounds great. All right, sounds great.
And that'll be good, and then, and did I say, I said Kevin, I said Jack, Jack, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I didn't even notice.
Sorry, I, sorry, need a cup of coffee. So, and then I think we discuss the rest, and we'll, you know, wait until you get, Jack, you'll send us anything over the summer, any, if something comes in from a regional planning agency.
Oh, yeah, if any, yeah, if any of them have any sort of response.
And you need to discuss it, or you need us here for a meeting, just let us know. Or we can write an email. Sometimes, I'll give you an example, in Newtown, they did get a comment, P&amp;Z just got a comment that, from the regional planning agency, they didn't like it, they didn't agree with it. So, they said, no, don't incorporate it, just, we're adopting it without making that change. That was Newtown. It was only one, it was only one suggestion, the others, they liked. And some others that we've done, we've gotten some cases where there were no comments at all. The regional planning agencies said, see, your local discretion, we don't have any comments. So we'll see what happens.
All right, very good.
Thank you all for your input, yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, that was a good review.
Yes.
All right, then, that concludes our business. Wait a second, wait a second now. Maybe ask Judy to make the motion that we adjourn the meeting.
It'll be my, my argument.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I've got a motion. Paul seconds it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, Judy.
Thanks a lot, guys. Thank you for everything.